Okay, number three.
Are we gonna fill in for Hillary or is she here?
Hillary is here.
Oh, okay, she was low. Okay, item number three, items removed from the agenda.
No items have been removed from the agenda.
Item four, public comment on items on the agenda which are not currently scheduled for a public hearing.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to any items that are not currently scheduled for a public hearing? Seeing none, we can move on to number five.
Confirmation that all hearing signs have been properly posted.
All public hearing signs have been properly posted.
Item six, public hearings, six point one, request for a re-subdivision of a seven point nine five acre property located at six forty-four Country Club Road into two lot buildings, lot in the R dash thirty zone, applicant agent, Dominico Fragomeni and Jadwiga Zraska, S twenty twenty-two dash two.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record. A little closer.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, good evening, my name is William Jackson, Jackson Environmental, I'm representing the property owners for this re-subdivision, and stated it's originally a seven point nine acre parcel, shown on the site plan, number two, sheet number two of five, original seven point nine acre parcel, being subdivided into a one point three nine acre parcel, which contains the existing residence, number six four four Country Club Road, and a proposed six point five six acre parcel, shown outlined in pink, and the proposed land use is residential, a single-family residential development in the southern portion of the parcel near Country Club Road, the property is located in our thirty zoning designation, and it is proposed to be served by an onsite subsurface sewage disposal system, and that has been approved by the City of Middletown Health Department, the property contains wetlands, extensive wetlands throughout, as well as a water course on the eastern side of the property, and the property has been through the inland wetlands and water courses commissioned, and it does have a permit, you know, to support the subdivision.
Are there any questions from the commissioners or the public?
Chairman, if I may, we do have one person calling in, if you wish to participate in the public hearing for this item, press star three, and it'll recognize that you want to speak.
Who is that? Sorry, Commissioner Tompkins?
Hi, so you're separating it into a one point nine acre where the residence is, and then a six point nine, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so, the existing residence will be on a one point three nine acre parcel, and the proposed residence will be on a six point five six acre parcel.
Okay, so, I didn't catch that, I couldn't hear you, so you're gonna put a residence on the larger section as well, with the wetlands?
Excuse me, I'm sorry about-
I couldn't hear you, but you're gonna put a residence on the larger portion, the portion with the wetlands?
Yes, in the southern section of the parcel, adjacent to Country Club Road, I have a, sheet number three shows the residence, the proposed residence, if you'd like me to put that on the easel.
Thanks.
Okay, does anyone from the public have a comment or question, or any other commissioners? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the request for re-subdivision, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, could we, please, we have to close the public hearing first, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, public hearing is closed, any comments or any additional questions from the staff or from the commissioners? Okay, so now entertain a motion to accept the request for the re-subdivision. Commissioner Giavrito.
Giuliano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will move to approve the re-subdivision with the following conditions, mylar map should be submitted for review and signature, land use staff shall review the development plans for compliance with the subdivision approval and the Middletown zoning code, public works comments dated May sixteen twenty twenty-two, addressed to the satisfaction of staff, and finally sedimentation and erosion controls shall be installed and inspected by city staff, controls to remain in effect and functional during the duration of the site work, and an anti-tracking pad shall be installed at the construction entrance, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I think Richard seconded first, Richard, do you accept those friendly amendments?
Absolutely.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you, motion passes. Thank you.
Chair, do we want to move the old business up?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to move old business, item seven point one, up above the next public hearing, six point two.
Mr. Chairman, I move to take up item seven point one as the next item of business right now.
Okay, is there-
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Did we get Commissioner Fulton, did she?
Yes. Yes, I thought I heard you hear me.
Thank you, all pass unanimously, so seven point one, thank you.
Pleasure to speak to you.
Wait, one moment, one moment, I have to read it into the record, please, seven point one, request for site plan approval to a conversion of an unfinished attic space into two one-bedroom units in an existing multifamily building located at forty-eight Liberty Street in the B dash one zone, applicant agent, Braham Berg slash O D A D A Ventures, SPR twenty twenty-two dash eighty-eight.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Bram Berg, two-three-four 10th Avenue, New York, New York, one zero zero one-one, I'm proposing an attic conversion, the attic is currently vacant and has a sizable roof allowance that will allow for additional units that can alleviate some of the housing shortage in and around Middletown Downtown Core, we proposed in our application, a decent-sized one-bedroom unit that would have two forms, two means of egress from the front and the back, without changing the attic A-shaped roof, and we would be requesting that there would be no further, or, currently the property is landlocked, it's a grandfathered site, there's currently no parking, all the current residents and tenants at the, either park off-street or on-street or nearby or don't have cars, a couple of them are program tenants, so we would wanted to accommodate other residents who might not need a car, who are participating in car-sharing programs, to have a affordable living situation on an upper unit near downtown. Thank you so much.
Thank you, any questions from commissioners?
I have a question, this is Commissioner Fulton.
Commissioner Fulton.
This is for the applicant, I want to know how many bathrooms do you have in this residence?
Yeah, there's currently one bathroom per each existing unit, so there's four bathrooms, and we are proposing each new unit in the rooftop have an additional extended plum line and sizable bathroom, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fazino.
Thank you, how many square feet is each unit, do you know?
Thank you for your question, I'm not off the top of my head, but I think it's around, give or take, seven hundred to eight hundred square feet, but more so in length than in width.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Do you have parking to accommodate the folks that live in all these units?
Thank you for your question, we currently, to my knowledge, most of the residents who currently live there do not have cars, they participate, they walk to their jobs, or they participate in car-sharing, or, you know, Uber, so we currently don't have any room, there's no driveway for existing tenants or new tenants, yeah.
I have another question.
Commissioner Fulton.
For the tenant, another question, is there a separate entrance for either of the tenants?
Yes, there's two means of egress, one in the front of the building and one in the back of the building, and so there'll be two means of egress for both proposed units for circulation and fire code.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the request for the site plan approval.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Secretary Fulton, please, roll call.
Thomas Padavina.
Aye.
Marcus Fazino.
Aye.
Janey Fulton, aye. Richard Pelletier.
Aye.
Catherine Johnson.
Aye.
Hillary Tompkins.
Nay.
Sebastian Giuliano.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Six point two.
Point of information, sorry to interrupt, point of information, Mr. Chair, I don't believe public hearing was closed before that vote was taken.
That wasn't a public hearing, but thank you.
No public here, thank you.
Six point two, petition to update and amend the Middletown zoning code by deleting sections twenty-three A, thirty-three A, thirty-nine, thirty-nine A, forty-four point zero eight, point four-five, and sixty-two, modifying sections eleven point zero one, sixteen, twenty-six, thirty, forty point zero three, point zero nine, forty-four point zero eight, point twenty-one, forty-eight point zero three, point zero six, sixty, and sixty-one, and create new sections twenty-three A, twenty-three B, twenty-three C, and sixty-two, and amend the Middletown zoning map by rezoning several properties located in the MX, TD, B dash three, IM, M, R dash fifteen, or R dash thirty zones to propose new MXR, MXC, or MXI zone to preserve and promote traditional neighborhood development, applicant agent, City of Middletown Land Use Department, Z twenty twenty-two dash two.
Okay, just bear with me, I provide, I prepared a slide presentation, which I provided a copy for all of you here, in case you have trouble seeing the board, I am gonna share my presentation through WebEx, and we'll go from there, just bear with me a moment. All right, let's get this out of the way. Come on. Okay, so, application, Z twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash two, mixed-use zoning and related text amendments, I just wanna quickly outline the contents of what we're gonna be discussing tonight, first, I will describe kind of the motivation behind this proposal that you have before you, I will then discuss some of the background to the existing zones that are going to be modified slash eliminated as part of this proposal, I will go through the proposal itself, I will not be going through each text word, word for word, that information has been provided to you and provided to the public, so I'll be kind of just kind of going over the, the proposed text and map changes kind of at an overview level, with a proposal kind of such as large and important as this, I just wanted to review with the commission what the basis of a decision on text amendments and map amendments are, as they are stated in the zoning code, I think that's gonna, a good, a good refresher reminder for the commission, so I'll discuss that briefly, and then how this proposal relates to those criteria, finally, we'll be soliciting public input, as this is a public hearing, and then I'll be available here to address any questions and answer them to the best of my ability, that said, I don't know if the intent, based on the presentation, the materials, or any questions from the commissioners or public, I don't know if the intent is to close the public hearing tonight, if you are so inclined to do so, I do have a few kind of modifications to the text that I'm, to the proposed text, after the draft was provided, I noticed a few kind of clerical changes and an omission in the use schedule, that I'd like to make sure that it's codified, so, we can address that if, if and when necessary. So first, for the motivation, motivation, so, any type we're, time we're looking at modifying the zoning code, zoning map, through the legislative action of this Planning Zoning Commission, I would think that we would want to see what the problems are that we'd want to be addressing with the changes, and so I've identified, you know, three things that this, three problems that this proposal addresses, first, some of our existing zoning just doesn't seem to work, the current MX zone is extremely restrictive in its uses, and hasn't stimulated the type of development that we're, that the intent of the zone would be, the existing TD zone, all the uses, while it's fairly expansive, they're all special exception uses, and, which would require application to this commission, public hearing, and all the requirements that are involved with that type of review, and whenever inquiries come in on properties, potential developments, even on the small scale, a lot of times people just decide to abandon that idea and, and move on to something else, and in doing so has, hasn't stimulated much, much development in the TD zone, the, another probably forgotten mixed-use zone is the IM zone, and that was a zone that was created for a specific development that was never effectuated, that was never built, and then finally, the B three zone, it's a very small, encompasses, I believe, six parcels, in my opinion, it kind of overregulates that small area, but that said, there are some good, some, some good, some good regulations within that zone that are gonna be recycled into the new zones that we're proposing, secondly, over the course of last year and a half, two years, two and a half years that I've been with the city, there's been inquiries for some, some good large-scale developments throughout the city, and they have essentially been shelved, waiting for the, waiting for zone change, while they're a good project, good projects, they don't comply with the zoning code, so, hopefully with this, this proposal, we'd be able to allow for certain developments, which, you know, expands our economic development opportunities in the City of Middletown Grand List, and lastly, we have a new plan of conservation development that was adopted by this commission in January of twenty twenty-one, and the plan calls for several actions to be taken by this Planning Zoning Commission, and this proposal provides the commission the opportunity to do so, moving into the P O C D, if you, I'm sure you're very well-versed, the P O C D is kind of divided into four thematic sections, and within each section outlines several goals, and I'm not gonna read them here for you, but listed here are some of the goals pulled out of the P O C D that I feel that this proposal addresses in some way. Okay, so, high level, the proposal itself, first, it's to eliminate some of the zones that don't work, which include the MX zone, the TD zone, the IM zone, and B three zones, and when I say eliminate, they will be stricken from the zoning code and removed from the zoning map, and in its place, we're gonna be creating, the proposal is to create three new zones in it, they're mixed-use zones, you'll see that they're called MXR, MX Residential, MXC, MX Commercial, and MXI, MX Industry, I spent the last year trying to come up with names for these zones that kind of capture the, the essence of what it's about, and every time I thought I got something good, it was either too cute or, or just wasn't good policy, wasn't good code, so I just went down to the basic, and with these, this nomenclature, it kind of captures the essence of what it's about, and then within each zone, it defines which uses are permitted in each zone, area bulk and yard requirements, and then additional requirements specific to those zones, and where we are eliminating these zones, they are, the, the proposal is to rezone them into these, one of these three zones, as well as a part, the existing parkland zone, which I'll describe later in the presentation, and then with these sweeping changes, there are other related zoning code amendments that are required to maintain consistency throughout the, throughout the zoning code, which I'll, which I'll discuss later, so first, to discuss the history of the MX zone, I had my assistant Gary do some research, and unfortunately I don't have his report with me, but I think I can summarize, what I have here is a map of the City of Middletown, and highlighted in red are the areas that are the existing MX zone, it was a zone that was originally adopted in nineteen eighty-five, but modified more recently in the, in the mid two thousand and tens, I believe, there's an array, array of uses, currently the single, basically single-family and two-family uses are permitted, and multifamily, and there's a limited commercial uses that are allowed by special exception, the IM zone, if you look at it, it's kind of hard to see, but up here on the north end of the property, in the Westlake section of, Westfield section of the city, is a property, there was, in the late nineteen eighties, there was a proposal under the MX, to rezon the property under MX, as it stated in back then, for a mixed-use development with a large-scale residential and commercial development, there was, I believe, a six, a twelve-story residential building and a six-story commercial building, and the commission ended up denying that as it didn't comply with the MX zone, so, but moving forward, they- So but moving forward, they approved the creation of a new zone, the interstate mixed zone for to accommodate that project. The zone was approved, but the property was never developed. It sat for a long time, changed ownerships a couple of times. And the city recently acquired it with the, with the help of this commission for open space using the two thousand nine open spot, open space bond money. So currently, that land is restricted to open space and will never accommodate a development, you know, that the IM zone would would allow. The TD zone is located here, southerly of our downtown. It was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-five and all the use, as as I stated before, all the uses in the zone are special exception uses. And that was done by design. I, as we, as I understand it, it was done by design because it didn't, they didn't, the city didn't want this area to compete with the downtown. So by having additional oversight, they'd be able to make sure that this area is developed to complement but not replace the downtown. But we found that that also, moving forward, almost fifty years later, I, I don't think that this area would actually compete with the downtown as the downtown has developed and to be the robust area that it is now. And finally, the B three zone, you can see this little speck here along Washington Street. I'll try to circle big. It is encompasses, I believe, six parcels. The B three zone was first adopted in nineteen ninety-five, I'm sorry, nineteen fifty-five. It was deleted, brought back, made the name recycled several times. Lastly, last time it was recycled was in two thousand and twelve, where these parcels were rezoned to the B three under the current B three language to accommodate a development or two. Okay, so moving into the proposal itself, first, I'm, I'm going to go, go through each new zone in its entirety, description of the zone, requirements and locations where they where they would be located in the city. I'm going to try not to read too much from the slides, but I will read the purpose of the zone as it's included in the proposal and incorporated in the code, proposed to be incorporated in the code. Purpose, the zone shall preserve traditional residential development patterns while allowing for a limited mix of uses that provide goods and services that support the local neighborhood. And some of the requirements are no lot size requirements, a frontage of properties of minimum fifty feet, front yard setback ten feet, rear, rear yard setback twenty-five feet, side yard ten feet, maximum lot coverage of twenty-five percent and lot coverages the, the size of building footprints. And then a new requirement that's not required anywhere in the, in the city is a impervious coverage requirement. It's fairly expansive as a minimum ninety percent. What I define impervious coverage later, but basically it's all hard surfaces, building roofs, pavement where, where it's not permeable to to stormwater. A height minimum of two stories for new construction and height maximum of three stories and thirty-six feet. There are some additional requirements for development in this zone. They're listed here. I'll try not to read them word for word. But the intent is to preserve buildings that are archived as historic. The parking requirement would be for uses would it be in conformance with section forty? A new requirement, no parking spaces shall be located between the front building facade and the front property line. So this would create lawn spaces in front of the buildings as opposed to parking spaces. Therefore, pushing parking to the side and rear of the buildings. A street tree requirement, street trees planted every twenty-five feet along the right away, preferably between the edge of the road and the sidewalk. I use the word preferably because sometimes it's not feasible to do so. So rather than losing this requirement or creating hardship, providing, providing an option, a compromise here. Any signage will be in compliance with the signage regulations. And multifamily uses with seven units or more shall comply with the requirements of the M zone. This is in part a recycle of a regulation in the existing MX zone. Seven units or more, I'll discuss right now. As a permitted use, currently, as a permitted use, this would allow single family, two family and up to six unit buildings permit as of right. So where essentially, if they can fit the building and fit the parking, it can be and it meets the other site plan criteria, it can be reviewed without special exception or public hearing. Farming agricultural uses would be permitted as well as bus stop shelters. Currently, bus stop shelters are permitted as special exception uses. This is a kind of a first cut of making it easier easier working through the regulatory process to allow for bus shelters to provide greater accessibility to Middletown residents. And as special exception uses, their neighborhood stores, it's a recycle from, from the MX zone. Service establishments, those would be allowing for like the barber shops and and those types of, you know, one, one-on-one services. Not listed here is also multifamily uses, but those would be special permit uses. This list is not expansive, the expansive list is provided and the materials provide in the materials provided to you and available to the public. The first area that I want to discuss that would be rezoned to the mixed use residential zone is off of West Street and Middlefield Street. I wish you could see my cursor a little bit better. But to orientate ourselves a little bit here, to the north would be Washington Street. Come down west and you can come to the fore, continue long west or bear right onto Middlefield Street. Here is the Aldi's development and here is Coggin Chog River. This property was rezoned to MX in two thousand and eighteen with the hopes of being developed with a mixed use development with commercial uses on the first floor and residential on a above. That plan didn't come to fruition. Instead, into, in two thousand and twenty, the commission approved a, a special exception for a multifamily development containing seventeen units. So I, I know that that project is moving forward and they're currently moving earth. So it seemed appropriate to rezone this as a, as within the residential zone because it does provide a buffer from between the commercial uses on Washington Street and the resident, residential uses to the south. The next area to describe is also in the, kind of the Liberty Street, Licken Street area. To orientate ourselves, Washington Street would be along this line here and this is north. Main Street is to the east here. This area is currently zoned MX and it's essentially an established neighborhood with mostly one to four unit residential homes. And with this MX R rezoning, it'll essentially preserve that. So preserve that, that zoning in that area and protect it from a potential commercial development that might be disruptive to the neighborhood. The next area, it's going to be a little hard to describe, but to orientate ourselves on the, on the west side here on the left is South Main Street. On the east side here is Main Street Extension. And in between here, it's not shown on this map, but bisecting is Sumner Brook. On the west side, it's zoned MX and on the east side, it's zoned TD. Essentially, this area is developed with mostly one, one, single and two family homes. It's an, they're established residential neighborhoods and which would be preserved under this MXR zoning classification. Moving forward, in an area currently zoned TD, Hillside Avenue. If you come down, is it East Main Street, past, past from downtown, East Main Street, past Stop and Shop, you take a left onto Hillside Avenue. There's a strip of, of homes. Actually, I think it's quite adorable, the first time I saw it. They're mostly a single family, two family homes, currently zoned TD. You, you can see this image, the area to the north will be zoned, proposed to be zoned MXI. I think this neighborhood preserved greater protection. So take this, proposing to take this area and zoning MXR. Next, we're going to move forward to the mixed use commercial zone. Again, I'll, I'll read the purpose to you. The purpose of this zone, the zone shall provide flexibility in the mix of uses that provide goods and services that support the local neighborhood and provide for an array of housing options. Again, minimum lot size, no requirement, no frontage requirement, ten yard, front, rear and side setback requirements, lot coverage twenty-five percent, impervious coverage seventy-five percent. Height minimum two stories, maximum three stories, thirty-six feet. I threw in a require, a, a kind of a, a compromise regulation, I'll, I'll put it that way, I'll be blunt. A once, one story buildings or buildings less than twenty feet in height could be permitted with a special exception from the improve, a special exception approval from the commission. The intent of that is there can be some great businesses wanting to locate in Middletown, but their business model doesn't fit into multi-tenant or mixed use developments. So what this, this, again, I'll call it a compromise, gives, gives an opportunity to attract that type of development as long as the commission finds it compatible with, with the other regulations and in the plan of conservation development. Additional requirements for the, for development in the zone, residential units and mixed use buildings shall be above the first floor. Buildings should be oriented to the street, signage compliance with the signage regulations. Non-residential uses on the first floor shall have window facing the front, front of the property and shall not be obstructed from view from the street or other pedestrian parking areas with window films, tilt, tents, shades, landscaping or other obstructions. This is a requirement, making, making it, requiring first floors of buildings in the zone to be active, being able to see in, be able to see out to, out of the street, onto the street. Moving forward, bike racks would be required as part of the development and should be sit in near business entrances. Pedestrian amenities shall be considered, may require, they require such as benches or public arts. Natural features shall be enhanced, preserved, incorporated in the development to the extent possible, largest, to the, a little typo here that I want to address if we, if I could. To the largest extent possible, large trees shall be preserved to the largest extent possible. Some of this language is recycled from some of the texts that, that's proposed to be deleted. And also a street tree requirement, or trees should be planted every twenty-five feet, preferably between the edge of road and the sidewalk. Specific requirements, specific to parking, parking requirements per use would be in compliance with the existing regulations. Parking shall be oriented to the rear side of the structure. Excuse me. Parking may be allowed between the front of the structure and the street if this design can increase pedestrian activity and the parking stalls are placed along the building. Excuse me. With this, with this this requirement, as again, one of those, I'll be blunt, call it a compromise or requirement where it's somewhere in between street, street design, place making and satisfying the needs of businesses, where businesses like, like it when customers have the ability to drive in and pull, pull up to the front of the building. Moving forward, the, there's any larger parking lots, fifteen or more cars. There's a landscaping requirement with islands, peninsulas, medians. And within those areas, these green areas, there'll be a landscape with a minimum of, of one tree every twenty-five feet. And no parking lot can exceed, no paved area of a parking lot can exceed eighty-five percent of the lot. So fifteen percent has to be landscaped. That's a, a requirement, a great requirement that I'm borrowing from the town of Berlin, thank you. Moving forward, multifamily uses with seven or more units need to comply with the M zone. Again, this is a recycle of a previous regulation. Permitted uses, again, this is not exhaustive, but basically one to six unit residential, residential buildings would be permitted as of, as of right. Farming agricultural uses, bus stop shelters. And a important change where mixed use developments, where we have buildings with commercial first floors and, and residential on this above would be permitted, permitted uses. Currently, there's special exception uses with an array of requirements. Basically, this makes, makes amazin' right and encourages them to develop in a way that I think the city wants. Also, as far as special exception uses, this area is going to be expanded. Currently, it's, it's very, very limited, but it's going to be expanded to, well, continue multifamily use, but expanded to banks, offices, fitness centers, restaurants, retail, service establishments, medical clinics, medical offices, commercial schools, brew pubs, types of businesses that, that support and can be supported by, by, by local neighborhoods. Moving into the areas, looking to rezone to this mixed use commercial zone. First, we're going to discuss a section of a land, piece of land located on Washington Street. To orientate ourselves, Main Street is kind of, kind of off the map here. It's on the north, north side of Washington. Cemetery is on the south side. And New Field Street kind of cuts across here and the, the railroad cuts across this way. The, there's a row of residential buildings on kind of the west side and more commercial type of uses on the east side of this section. I think I said it's currently zoned MX and I'm proposing the MXC zone for this area. Moving a little bit further down on Washington Street, basically at the intersection of Washington and Boston, looking to rezone this area, it's essentially a mix of various commercial uses. The land to the north, on the north side of Washington here is that is the B three zone. Directly on the south side is the MX zone. And one property is actually in the R fifteen zone, fifteen zone. Earlier, I mentioned that there are development opportunities kind of waiting for this, this proposal. Well, the rezoning this addresses one of them. There's currently a vacant parcel at the corner of Boston and Washington. It's a tight parcel, the owner acquired. It's a tight parcel, the owner acquired, um, or is about to acquire the, actually, I, I think they're under contract. If they haven't gotten it already, um, the single-family residence to this, to the south. They will incorporate, the plan is to incorporate this, um, whole area into a, uh, single development. Moving forward, um, this area here is essentially the, um, west side of Broad Street. We have the Main Street here, B-one on this side, um, DVD, um, the Design Village District on the west side. And this area provides kind of a in-between, uh, transition between the two zones. It's currently zoned MX and it has, uh, a mix of commercial and residential uses. Moving north for the moment, um, along Newfield Street, there's currently a small pocket of MX, current, uh, land that's currently zoned MX. And it has a, a mix of a commercial and residential, residential uses, um, proposing this to be, um, MX, MXC. Moving back in the other direction, um, this is kind of a large area here, it's essentially all the MX, uh, most of the MX zone, um, located along South Main Street. It extends essentially from the end of Main Street, which is at the top here. This little PL is the South Green, all the way down to, um, where Pamecha Pond, uh, meets the road. It's all currently zoned MX with the exception, MX and I'm proposing it to be the, uh, MXC. There's an array of commercial and residential uses. As I mentioned earlier, this section of the MX zone, um, I'm, I described it to be rezoned as MXR to preserve the character of that residential neighborhood. Moving a little bit back north, um, try not to bounce around too much, but do the best we can. This is, uh, an area on Main Street Extension, Main Street is here. This, uh, purple, purple building here is the YMCA. This, uh, area that's cross-hatched here is the, um, la, uh, the building and land owned by Middlesex Hospital where very recently the commission, uh, approved the, the rezoning to the, oh, the substance and mental health, um, uh, overlay zone, subs abuse and mental overlay zone. For this property. That overlay zone would remain as part of this proposal, but it would be changing the, um, underlying, uh, zone to the MXC zone. And then this area is mostly medical and not residential uses and, uh, and actually city uses, uh, park use here. Moving down Sabre Brook Road, there's an existing patch of land that's zoned MX as mostly commercial, medical uses. Excuse me, um, on the other side of, um, I'm sorry, um, yeah, so, uh, currently zoned MX residential uses on the other side. Most of this, this is all MX, but this parcel here is currently zoned R-thirty. This is another one of those, uh, potential, uh, development properties, um, that would benefit from rezoning. It's essential, it, it is landlocked, but there are easements, um, to this property, um, to provide access to Sabre Brook Road. So I'm proposing to rezone that to the MXC zone. Moving a little bit further down, the Sabre Brook Road is another patch of commercial, um, art and office uses. On the, I guess, the north side of Sabre Brook Road, on the opposite side is, um, the B-two zone where there's a mix of commercial uses. You may remember, um, many of you might remember, um, that the commission reviewed a, uh, application to rezone this triangular parcel from the current R-fifteen zone, this is all, all R-fifteen, but, uh, specifically this one from R-fifteen to B-two to accommodate a, a, uh, commercial development. The commission ultimately denied that application, um, and suggested a, uh, mixed-use rezoning. And, um, that's the impetus of, um, including this in the proposal. Also, if you look to the, um, right side of the screen, this is a snip of, um, a, uh, image, uh, or a map on the, in the POCD as it describes, um, possible areas to locate, uh, neighborhood centers. And, um, the property that I just described is, it look, essentially located at, at this, at this star here, the upper star. Within a quarter mile ra, radius of what could be a, a center point of a neighborhood center. There's another star here that I'll describe, uh, probably pretty soon. Moving on to the last new zone provoked, uh, proposed, it's the mixed-use industry zone. And again, I'll read the purpose. The zone shall provide flexibility in the mix of use, including residential, commercial and industrial uses that provide goods, services and employment opportunities that fits into the traditional development patterns of the area. Excuse me, uh, no lot size requirement, no frontage requirement, uh, ten-foot setback requirements, lot coverage, uh, fifty, fifty percent maximum, accommodate larger buildings, um, impervious coverage maximum of ninety percent and a maximum height of six stories. Many of these, um, regulations are, um, carried over from the existing TD zone as much of this new mixed-use industry zone is currently zoned TD. Additional court criteria, parking compliance with the parking requirements, um, street trees requirement, landscape parking, as I described earlier, signage comply with the signage regulations and then multifamily units, uh, development, seven units or more comply with the M-zone. Again, not a, not an exhaustive list of uses, but permitted uses similar to the MXC, uh, multifamily and then essentially, oh, okay. And essentially carrying over, um, many of the, if not all, the permitted uses in the TD zone, um, into this, uh, this new zone. The area, um, area that we're looking to rezone to the, um, MXI is mostly the TD zone, uh, centered around Main Street Extension, East Main Street, Walnut Street. The Walnut Street area is actually zoned, uh, TD here, and then this area is actually zoned MX. There's a, uh, in this area is a mix of, uh, residential, commercial and industrial uses. Just to point aside, this area that's MX, um, essentially this side. This zoning is what I, I'll, let's call it a placeholder zoning. Because as we move forward in implementing the, uh, Riverfront Master Plan, it'll likely require, um, rezoning of, um, much, much of this area, so, as we eliminate the MX zone, we have to zone it something, so, um, it seemed natural to continue the MXI zone to this area, knowing that it could very well change in the, in the future. And, okay, where are we? Okay, so this, um, back on, so this property here, um, or a collection of properties, it's collection of parcels, um, it's bounded by, um, Randolph Road, um, Bartholomew Road here and, and the highway. This, um, was the, the former, uh, CLMP property. It's got, uh, a mix of uses, industrial uses, couple of houses. And, excuse me, and, um, it's, um, one of those, uh, development opportunities that we discussed. It was, this area was all recent, recently purchased by a local developer, looking to do a mixed-use development. And if I can gaze your attention to the right side of the screen, um, this is, um, essentially the star is the location of it as it relates to, um, the conceptual neighborhood center. And, um, and then if we want to bounce down to this section of Middletown here, it's bounded by South Main Street, Highland Avenue and Randolph Road. It is currently zoned M, um, it has a mix of, uh, commercial, residential, industrial uses. The proposal is to rezona MXI. Again, this is another one of those development opportunities, um, that would benefit from, um, this rezoning. Moving, if, looking to the side of the screen, this is a snip of a, uh, conceptual neighborhoods, location for, uh, neighborhood center on South Main Street, focused on the area that's, um, currently B-two. And, um, this property falls within a, uh, quarter mile of what could, could be the, this, uh, center of a neighborhood center. And, um, lastly, for the MXI zone, um, there is a section of Middletown to the north of the downtown, um, um, it's, uh, the St. John's, uh, street area. It's currently zoned MX as a mix of residential, commercial and, and, and church uses. To be honest with you, I didn't, wasn't sure what to do with this. It's, it, it was a challenge trying to fit, um, the right zone in there, so, um, I thought, I'll, why not just, um, be the most expansive that we can and, um, rezonate to, um, the most, um, the most liberal zone? It does provide a, uh, buffer between downtown and the IRA zone, which is one of our, uh, um, industrial zones. And, okay, and the last area, um, not to be rezoned, um, one of the new MX zones, but, um, to rezone as parkland. That's Parkland Zone is an existing zone in the code and on the map. Essentially, the only parcel of land zoned this is the South Green. This proposal changes that. The current, the land that it described, that's, um, the IM zone, which the city purchased for open space, um, is located here. The proposal is to rezone that parkland, which is essentially land, um, that would be under the control of the city of Middletown. And, um, a, as it is, um, um, this is kind of one of those, um, this, uh, I propose, proposing a slight modification to the existing parkland zoning regulations. It's currently apparently controlled by the Parks and Recreation Department, which is a division of Public Works. I thought it was, um, appropriate, um, at this time to, uh, expand that to be controlled by the city of Middletown. This would be, again, one of, one of those types of kind of placeholder regulations where, um, something that I want to address, um, in the future to, uh, make this, uh, zone, uh, more robust. Okay, so tha, that's kind of the, the meat of the proposal, and then there's going to be, um, some other changes to the code to accommodate, um, the significant changes ma, uh, proposed. First, I'm going to describe how this impacts the, the use schedules. The, uh, all the permitted uses are listed in sections, uh, sixteen sixty-one of the zoning code. Essentially, the proposal is to delete all references of the MX, TD, IM and B-three zones from section sixteen sixty-one. Delete, um, all the uses that are only found in one of those four zones. And then also delete the existing section sixty-two moratoriums, which, um, has a, uh, list of moratoriums that have long since expired and are no longer, uh, active. And with that, with the deletion of that sixty, section sixty-two, it provides a nice spot for a new section, which is essentially the use schedule for, um, for these, uh, three MX, uh, MX zones. When I was, uh, working through this proposal, it was very challenging not to, um, address too much. And it, every, every, every time that I wanted to, whoops, lost the screen. Every time that I wanted to do, do it the right way, it found that it was making the project bigger than it needed to be. So essentially, what I did was as a compromise and, and one of these placeholder regulations, create this new zone, copy over the, um, language, that existing language in sections sixteen sixty-one that would apply to these new zones and, um, assigned zones, um, accordingly. And, um, and, and that's, that, that's essentially, essentially, and I, um, you, I provided you the, uh, list of uses, so I'm not, I'm not going to go into each one of them specifically. Unless, unless you want me to. As another, uh, ancillary zoning change, um, the, uh, current, um, regulations for the institutional development zone, which is essentially focused around Wesleyan. It has a, uh, criteria where any uses that's not essentially one of the industrial, institutional uses related to the university would fall under, uh, would, would apply the MX zone, um, regulations. This would, since there wouldn't be an MX zone, um, as I, I'm suggesting changing it to, um, fall under the requirements of the MXR zone and these three changes, uh, would reflect that. I thought, I thought this was a good chance to, um, slide in a, uh, modification to an existing, um, zoning code related to off-street parking loading, specifically to properties or developments with, uh, two or more uses. Essentially, what the code requires is, um, park, the parking demand to be achieved for each use on the zone. It, each use on the property. And what this proposal does is, um, in, shown in here in red, was authorize the commission to, uh, reduce the number of parking spaces required on-site, um, if it's part of a shared parking plan. The commission, uh, would, um, had, would have the ability to require a parking study from a, uh, traffic, uh, professional to evaluate shared parking plan, to make sure that it is, uh, feasible. Some modifications to, uh, a couple of the special exception standards. The existing standards for, the existing language for multifamily dwelling, dwellings containing three or more dwelling units are subject to a, uh, a list of requirements. My proposal is to remove the language containing three or more dwelling units. Since the proposal would allow up to six units, um, as of right. And anything larger than six units, um, there is, there would be a direct reference to these standards. And then lastly, to this section would, uh, delete the, uh, mixed-use development standard, mixed-use, uh, development use standards, um, for that type of development as they would, uh, be permitted uses. And, um, many of the design criteria are incorporated in the MX, um, MX, uh, C and MXI, uh, uh, standard requirements of those zones. I didn't, uh, our sign regulations, I didn't modify any of the sign regulations, that's a project for another day. But essentially, um, changing the, uh, zones that were eliminated, eliminated and using those, uh, similar or same criteria for the new zones created. And, okay, lastly, um, there's two new definitions that, um, are proposed to section sixteen. Which, which I'll read to you, it's not too big. New definition for impervious coverage, which would be the total horizontal area of all buildings, roofed or covered spaces, paved surface areas, walkways and driveways and any other site improvements that decrease the ability of the surface of the site to absorb water. And, um, a new definition for mixed use, um, a combination of two or more allowed uses in a zone, including a resi, a residential use. Okay, so that essentially is the, the proposal. And, um, as I said, I wanted to go- And as I said, I wanted to go over the criteria of this commission as it evaluates this proposal and any other future zoning text or map amendments. You know, heck, I'll, I'll, I'll read it to you because it's important to absorb. So coming directly out of the zoning code, unchanged. Section A, any of the amendments would, would have to either address error in the existing code, changes that have taken place in the city in patterns of development and land use, the supply of land and its particular suitability for various purposes, the effect of a map change on the surrounding area, the purpose of zoning, the objectives of the plan of development, neighborhood acceptance weighed against community needs and legality. And Section B, whether some other method or procedure under the zoning regulations is available and more appropriate that the amendment, than the, more appropriate than the amendment proposed. And C, as a general policy, the commission should not establish any zone with a geographic area less than 20 acres. Under A, I didn't go through the exercise of addressing each of these. I'll allow you to do that yourselves. But I just wanted to make a point of, as addressed to the Plan of Conservation Development. Earlier, I showed several goals that I believe this proposal addresses in some way. And within each goal in the POCD, there's a list of action items. And addressing, and there's certain action items that are the responsibility of this planning zoning commission, which are related to the zoning codes. And I can go into detail if you'd like, but otherwise, I believe that this proposal addresses these, these action items in some way. May not, may not completely solve it, but, but they help. Secondly, Section 71B, is there some other method that can be achieved without a zoning change? And I think we can do nothing and maintain status quo, or we can accept possibly some of the amendments and reject others, which I hope we don't. And lastly, basis of decision, Section 21, 71C, you shouldn't be, as a policy, don't rezone area that's less than 20 acres. Rest assured, the proposal suggests rezoning 58.5 acres of Middletown to MXR, 243 acres to MXC, 312 acres to MXI, and 96.5 acres to the parkland zone. From grand total of 710 acres or 1.1 square miles are 2.6% of all land in the city impacted by this proposal. Thank you, and I'd be happy to address any questions or comments.
Is there anyone in the public that has questions or comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you very much. Larry McQ, 87 Oldlander Lane, also President of the
Sorry, could you just speak a little closer to the mic, a little louder? Is it, is it off? Yeah, check, you can pull it out.
Thank you very much. Okay, Larry McQ, 87 Oldlander Lane, President of Middlesex Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to congratulate Mark and all of you for addressing this very important issue as we go forward. I know it's been a lot of work, especially in Mark's behalf, and before that, Joe Semoles, who started this up. The chamber supports these proposed zone changes. These types of zone changes are needed in order to promote the well-reasoned business and neighborhood development in several areas of town. The MX and TD zones, which are being changed, were originally established decades ago when the business and residential communities of Middletown were very different than what exists today. At the chamber, we have heard time and time again how properties in those zones were more difficult to develop because of these outdated regulations. These changes will allow smart development, which is so, so important. Also, a couple of really good examples of how these changes will be beneficial to Middletown are the former Connecticut Light and Power Site or Eversource Site on Randolph Road and the former Frontier Site on South Main Street. These two properties, each of which are formerly operated as vehicle maintenance facilities for those utilities, have been sold recently to developers. Each of these sites are currently zoned for residential, although they have never, ever been used for residential uses. These zone changes will allow development of these properties that is more in line with today's existing neighborhood surroundings. The development proposals being discussed for those two sites alone, plus others throughout our great community, will generate a great number of jobs, grow Middletown's economy, and benefit all of the surrounding neighborhoods. Additionally, which is very important to us, along the commercial corridors of Washington Street and Sabre Brook Roads. These zone changes will allow for more orderly development. In particular, Washington Street, which is a main commercial corridor, has several residential and mixed-use areas, which will benefit from this proposal, especially on the north side of Washington Street, west of Berlin Road. And most importantly, the riverfront and South Cove area will benefit, in particular, the former Jackson Corrugated Site. Several developers, as all of you know here, over many years have been stymied by zoning challenges of that parcel. These proposed changes will provide a huge jumpstart to development of that area. Again, I want to thank you for looking at this. I think it's very important for the community, and thanks for your really dedication to the city of Middletown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I'm very supportive of the, the proposal to take so-called meaningless zones, to eliminate them. So I, I think that's a great idea. But there is no way we can close the public hearing tonight, and there's no way we can vote on this right away. There's a lot of, even though we, I'm going to assume we support the general idea, these specifics, some, the development standards, the map, they need to be gone over very, very carefully. The maps are difficult to read, as I mentioned two weeks ago. We can't even see the street. But those, I know, can be changed very easily. So let me talk about the things you presented tonight. And I really wish we had gotten a copy of this presentation. I know it takes a while to put a PowerPoint together, but I wish we had had the text. That would have been very helpful. I will say this. It's easier to understand what's going on if we had a chart of all the existing zones and their requirements compared to the requirements that you're asking for. And the reason I think that would have been helpful to many people is that there are a couple takings. So we can't have takings, or we have to discuss them. The TD allows six stories now, M allows eight, and you're reducing them to three. The IM zone, that area near 372, if we, if we are fortunate to have rail service return from Middletown to Berlin, that entire area now called parkland, or proposed to be parkland, that is juicy area along Route 73, 372 for, for mixed-use development. So those are, those are glaring. Third, the ID Wesleyan area was not listed in your petition. And I, I, I do not support the idea that individual lot requirements should be eliminated. That's a real problem that we have. Anywhere where there's consolidation of lots or subsuming of smaller lots into a larger, that is a very big problem. Because we're getting bigger buildings instead of smaller buildings. Smaller buildings is what make more businesses available, more buildings available for small business owners to open. This idea of MXR, MXI, MXC, that, God bless you, but that distinction is meaningless. You either encourage mixed use, or you don't. Each individual property owner is going to figure out what works on his site. Large lots, that's where you put industrial. You're not going to put industrial in the Lincoln Liberty area. So that is all figured out by common sense and logic, and how much traffic is going on the road. You don't have commercial spaces unless they're on a busy street. So I think it should be MX, that's it. Simple and clean. I'm not completely, I think there's some things missing. For our main roads, all the frontages should be mixed use. Sabre Brook, Newfield, Washington, South Main. We should also have North Main, East Street at Minor, Cross Street, and Silver Street. I'll submit all my comments if you just want to, if you, if you miss. What we need is not a front setback, we need a build-to line. That's a definite distinction. The zoning code we have now, anybody can build anywhere they want. They just can't come closer to the road than whatever feet. What we want are buildings built up to the same line. The standards you came up with, 10-foot side yard, 10-foot front yard, 25 rear yard, and you want a 50-foot width of lots, even though you say size doesn't matter for the whole lot. That's rather arbitrary. Right then and there, I can see, if you have a 50-foot wide lot and you have two side yards at 10 feet, you can only have a 30-foot wide building. You can never have row houses. All these streets are streets where we love to have row houses for, for a certain, you know, four units together, et cetera. So those perform, those development standards have to be figured out. Your coverage is random, it doesn't make sense. Saying, oh, we're going to have 15% pervious or natural on even industrial lots. What you're going to get is land only around the perimeter of a parking lot that is going to be natural. We have to demonstrate, we have to show them where you want the natural, which is the front yard and the side yard, and a real yard, and not people just trying to meet your numbers. And lastly, I'm, I'm curious. If you're rezoning Liberty and Lincoln, why aren't you also proposing the whole DVD to be mixed use, which it was, and is? Why aren't the other couple of R15 properties on Boston Road mixed use? And why isn't the few properties of R15 on the south side of Sabre Brook Road mixed use? Lastly, I would encourage everyone to look up M, the multifamily. It has some very limited things you can do once you are, well, for density. You can only have 10 units to the acre, only if they're studios. You can't have more than six units to the acre. That's suburban houses. So our standards, all the little details, they don't make any sense. They don't support MX. But Mark, I'm delighted that you want to eliminate things. There's lots of things we'll never have to argue about because they'll just be erased. And I think it's a real step forward. But the map has to be, I think, more supportive of the main streets, the way Larry was mentioning. And, and we have to have development standards that reflect what can really happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Giuliano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I listened to Commissioner Johnson, and I understand her concerns. But I, I really do see a value in the proposal substantially as presented, that eliminates the MX, TD, IM, and B3 zones and creates new MXR, MXC, and MXI zones. Pretty much all of the, the zones that have been delineated that we saw on the PowerPoint are mature areas of town. They're already built up, things exist there already. And I read this entire proposal as an attempt to give due deference to what already exists and, and not create something that will radically change what has grown over the years. And simply just create, turning everything into one amorphous MX zone, I don't think fixes that problem. I think it opens the door to, you know, what, what you might want to do on Washington Street is probably not going to work on Highland Avenue, and vice versa. And I, and I think that's what you're trying to get at, if I'm not mistaken. That's, so I would, I would support it pretty much as it, as it is. I question the, the parkland zone, especially as it's being described as a, as a placeholder. It's, it's going to affect one piece of property that's owned by one owner, which is the city of Middletown, which is, pretty much already has control over what it's going to do with what it owns. If there's some future idea for that, I don't know that we have to create a zone now to deal with something that's, that's not fully baked yet. So, I mean, it is what it is. If you, if you create a parkland zone, it's not a problem. If you leave it where it is, if you leave it the way it is, it's probably not a problem either. The other thing is, is I think Commissioner Johnson is right. The initial, what we were given initially didn't mention the institutional development zone. And, and that was kind of a surprise tonight. But if I, if I listen to the presentation correctly, it's that rather than eliminate the smaller lots, whatever is not being used by Wesleyan, existing smaller lots would have to be maintained. Or did I read that incorrectly?
So the, so the institutional development zone incorporates a lot of properties, and including property not controlled by Wesleyan, by, by private owners. You'll find some single families, some, some, some two-family houses in that area. What, what I think the existing code does is allows for essentially a residential, private residential uses in the zone to, to exist and to be able to be modified as, as, as necessary in accordance to that, to the MX zone, kind of as a catch-all, as, as an opportunity.
As I, as I listen to Commissioner Johnson, I think her concern is that smaller lots would be amalgamated into larger ones. And we want to avoid that happening.
Okay, oh, you want, you want to speak to consolidation now?
I mean, I thought that's kind of where you were going with, with that caveat. I thought that's kind of where you were going, with that caveat to the institutional development zone. I kind of thought that's what you wanted to do. But if it isn't, it's something that should be done, to avoid, you know, properties in that institutional development zone, that right now are small, single-family or two-family houses, to be sold to, you know, three or four of them sold to one purchaser who wants to make one be a lot. And that's something I don't think we want to encourage.
I don't think the proposal encourages it. I think it's silent to consolidation. I guess I'll just take this opportunity to talk about consolidation of lots. I really want to defer to general counsel on this, but I don't know how we can prevent, through zoning, consolidation of lots. Any property owner on any day that owns two parcels that abut each other can file a merger map on the clerk's record without any zoning review. That's their right to do so. So, and that's essentially a consolidation of parcels. So I hesitate to put in any zoning regulations that prohibit that without consultation with counsel. Yeah, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
You're correct. We don't have to point it out, we don't have to encourage it. This, that's just what I'm saying. Seven years, no, nine years ago, there was an enormous, it was the last tremendous public hearing where this was attempted in this actual location. And Seb pointed it out accurately. There needs to be, after this exercise, we need to have something more in our zoning code that shows how we want to keep the fabric. You were talking about it, you said it in the introduction of every one of these things. We want things to look like they belong there. So more specifically, let's talk about if two properties were to be combined. There should be a way where someone can do what they want with them, but that it can also be reversed in a simple way. Now, that may be something that the city attorney can't answer. But the whole purpose of showing a form and keeping a form, and that's what we would hope that your front yard, side yard, et cetera, encourages. When they want to do something bigger, that's when they say, oh, special exception, public hearing, all those other things. So if we, just as a first step, don't talk about it and don't encourage it, I think that's a good way. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Giuliani?
Yeah, just briefly, I think, I mean, the way you legally discourage something is to encourage the opposite. And I think that's the approach. I mean, encourage the maintenance of, write this in a way that it encourages maintaining the look of the neighborhood, as opposed to encouraging, encouraging things that would deviate from the look of the neighborhood. So, I mean, that's the way I think you do it.
Any other questions from commissioners, comments?
If I may?
Yes.
Just to address some of Commissioner Johnson's comments, I agree with a lot of them in whole. A couple I want to discuss a little bit further. But some of the suggestions, especially the expanding beyond the scope of what this was, every time that I wanted to go in a direction, it would explode into something bigger than we can handle, you know? So I like the idea of developing standards that are better, that are more robust, that achieve the goals that we want. That said, I think we need to start somewhere. And I think you even said it once, it doesn't have to be perfect, but let's get something in the books, or something to that effect. So that's essentially what I did. This proposal, while it achieves a lot of goals, it creates more work too, which is fine, and I think we're all happy to do that. So that's kind of where I had to find cutoff points to the scope of the project. And essentially, this is where we are. I really had no intention of the commission closing the public hearing tonight. I do have a couple of things that I want to fix, so, which I'll do. I think we can have a conversation in the, before the next meeting, where we can work together and find some compromise where it gets better, but without blowing up the project. So with that, I guess those are my comments.
Thank you. So I guess what I'm hearing from Merrick and--
There's more, there's public online.
Is there anyone online who has a comment, or questions?
Anyone online, if you want to participate in the public hearing, use the raise hand function on the WebEx platform. If you're calling in, press star three, and it'll recognize that you want to speak. Or you can drop a quick message in the chat, and I'll see it.
Okay, so it seems that we're looking for a continuation of the public hearing to make some corrections, verbiage, and other details. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you. The motion passes, we will continue the public hearing. Item number eight.
New business.
There is none. Item number nine.
Public comment on topics which are not or have not been subject of a public hearing.
Is there anyone online or in the public here that would like to speak to anything that has not been scheduled for a public hearing? Okay, item 10.1.
Minutes of the May 25, 2022, regular meeting.
Move to accept as presented.
So moved. Second, I'm sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Item 10.2, River Cog report.
None.
Item 10.3, staff report.
Yes, bear me with one moment while I find my notes. Okay, so there was no new legal notice for any new public hearings for the next meeting. I'm assuming we'll continue in this past public hearing for text minutes in the next meeting. There will be a couple other more administrative applications for review. Within your packets today, you'll find a flyer for the rollout event planned for the Riverfront Master Plan. The event's going to be Saturday, July 2, and there's a schedule of activities there. I do have a zoning, a report from my zoning enforcement officer, which I'll just read quickly, dated June 6. Zoning enforcement has three long-term notices in regards to blight. There are four grass complaints in process, and five notices for signage violations, and two blight notices in process. Six notices of violations were closed out in the month of May. Temporary signage has lessened, but continued to be enforced on a weekly basis. Thomas Hazel, CZO.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Mark, we used to get a report from the ZBA, just one sheet with all the addresses, with the status.
The last ZB meeting was canceled.
Oh, I meant to say, the ZEO would provide us with, like, a monthly report, what's happening. And once in a while, we would notice something, and we would talk about it. All right? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
10.4, Commission Affairs.
Is there anything for the good of the order anyone on the commission needs to discuss or address? Okay, number 11.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
This place will never be forgotten. A lovely place called Middletown. I know I'll always remember. The warmth of its sound lingers so long. No other can be found. If you've been there, I will make a bet. The lovely times you won't forget. The chimes that are played echo through time. Uncountable by days. The city park you'll have to see. And Harbor Park's a place to be. Oh, yes. Middletown's remembered. I seem to often feel it near somehow. Often I can hear its lovely tone. And City Hall has a beauty such a beauty on its own. So no, no one can say. A town so dear will ever go away. I love it now and always will. Believe me, Middletown will leave you so fulfilled. Connecticut, that is. Middletown. Middletown. Middletown, Connecticut.
Ladder, ladder I descend. Down where cocktail parties and landscape vistas are rarefied air. It's too freezing cold up there. Corrugated hostesses make me shiver. I'm climbing a ladder down to the river. Ripple current ocean bound. Only here do I bow down. Sink my toes in fish rank muck. Soft and warm and full of sun. My heart sings to the blessing giver. I'm climbing a ladder down by the river. Climbing a ladder down to the river. Ladder, ladder I descend. Down where cocktail parties and sink my toes in fish rank muck. Soft and warm and full of sun. My heart sings to the blessing giver. I'm climbing a ladder down by the river.
Feel your wheels on the road and your hands on the wheel. Watch the way that the world makes you feel. Is it a heavy load or is it lighter than air? Feel your wheels on the road. It'll take you somewhere. It'll take you somewhere. It'll bring you right there into the middle. And a still small voice says, "I am what I am. I am right here and I am with you." Starlight honey, I'm gonna shine. Keep it in mind. Feel your feet on the ground in the crunch of the snow. You know your boots make a sound wherever you go. Is it sweet as a whistle or sad like a song? Feel your boots on the ground and you won't step wrong. And you won't step wrong and it won't take long. Get into the middle and a still small voice says, "I am what I am." And I'm gonna be strong and I am with you. In starlight honey, I'm gonna shine. Keep it in mind. Keep you here on the river, on the whippoorwill call. On the quiet of an evening, on the rise and fall. Is it crying out to you? Is it whispering? You gotta lean in, keep listening. It's getting busy in my world. It's getting busy in my head. I get dizzy when I try to find a place to be instead. Feel your wheels on the road and your boots on the ground. Now listen to the rise and fall. Try to put it down. Go on and put it down. Go on and let it rain. Get back to the middle and a still small voice says, "I am what I am." And this is a thing, I am with you in the starlight honey. And I'm gonna shine. Keep it in mind. Yeah, I am with you in the starlight honey. And I'm gonna shine. No matter what we do, keep it in mind.
Just because of you, I'm splitting with a pass. I'm trying to get my thing together. Just because of you, baby, please try to understand. My turn at love, you gave it back again. And I believe it's all that I can do to give you the best of me. At first you came and cast my way, I took a bite. Now I don't know if what I'm doing's right. So please come back and let's start over again, baby. Out of the showers, out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers. Out of the showers, out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. Cause in this house of love, you find protection. Never is a day where you be neglected. Baby, come on in. Hey girl, come out of the rain. Love again. You ain't never gonna be the same. Baby, come on in. Oh yeah, come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seeing lover chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. Cause everybody knows true love is power. And everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." I wanna tell you one thing that she want loving. I tell you that she want me. She be do be do. I'm giving her loving, she giving it back to me. She be do be do. She got everything, thing that I need. She be do be do. I'm giving her loving, tell you she's giving it back. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of the showers. Showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the shower, baby. Hey girl, come out of the rain. Live forever in this house of love. You and me, baby. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seeing lover chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. Cause everybody knows true love is power. Everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." I wanna tell you one thing that she want the loving. I tell you that she want me. She be do be do. Give her everything I've got, she give it back to me. She be do be do. She's got everything, everything I need. She be do be do. I'm giving her good love, tell you she's giving it back to me. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers. You ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of love.
When was the last time you wrote him a letter? You said, "My brother, how are you?" When was the last time you said, "I love you"? And I'm just calling to say that I do. When was the last time you paid him a visit? You said, "What is it that seems to trouble your mind"? And when was the last time you had no reason? No special season, you would just be kind. Today you may be with us, tomorrow might not be yours. The future is promised to none of us, no matter young or old. Always remember, here there's no forever. And to love each other is the best gift to mankind. When was the last time you said, "Brother, don't worry. I'll come in a hurry, call me anytime." And when was the last time you said, "Sister, I'm sorry. Brother, I'm sorry, it will be alright." Do you honor your father and mother? Love thy neighbor as you love thyself? Are you ready to face your creator? To answer for yourself? Always remember, here there's no forever. And to love each other is the best gift to mankind. Even a flower, she used to be nurtured. If you give it no water, it will wither away and die. Have you considered, here there's no forever? Be sure to love each other before time pass you by. Show love to everyone before time pass you by. Be kind to everyone before time pass you by. Be sure you love each other before time pass you by.
Why did you leave me? Why did you have to go? Oh yes, you knew, oh yes, you knew that it would hurt me. So I'm all alone, I have nobody to call my own. That's why I need somebody to rock me all night long. Cause train number one's gone. Train number two's gone. Train number three has been gone. Train number four's gone. Train number five's been gone. How long must I wait for you? Got my ticket for my reservation, I'm in room. Trains are waiting on the track. But I got no reservation for a ticket too. So I'm gonna give my ticket back. Come on, train number one back. Train number two's back. Train number three's been back. How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you? Got my ticket for my reservation, I'm in room. Trains are waiting on the track. But I got no reservation for a ticket too. So I'm gonna give my ticket back. Cause train number one's back. Train number two's back. Train number three's been back. Train number four's back. Train number five's been back. How long must I wait for you? Cause trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Yeah, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Yeah, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Yeah, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Cause trains kept rolling.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you? Yeah, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Oh, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Oh, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Yeah, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
Oh, the trains kept rolling.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you?
There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. I don't even know her name, but that just goes to show you the way that I am. She's not a doctor or a lawyer, a priest or a nun, but to me, she's divine. She steps out into the road, make a small deal. The way she lights her glow, the way she stops those wheels. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's a hero of mine. I thank her every time. I hope she ever left this town. Then cause she cut us down. She's a main street, middle town crossing guard. Makes me proud to call middle town my own backyard. The main street, middle town crossing guard. From the Aragoni Bridge or our fruit line, they come a bale and bribe. They don't wanna stop for nothing, all caught up in their own little world. I butt my pay broom net, she shuts them down and does it all with a smile. She's just a local girl. She loves her own hometown. She lets her flag unfold. She spans the world around. She's a main street, middle town crossing guard. She's a main street, middle town crossing guard. She's a hero of mine. I thank her every time. I hope she ever left this town. I hope the cause she cut us down. She's a main street, middle town crossing guard. Makes me proud to call middle town my own backyard. The main street, middle town crossing guard. Oh. There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market. There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market. Crossing the street to the public market
Glass half empty, glass half full Depends on the day Depends on the fool who is asking And the fool who replies You're gonna drink it up anyway Doesn't really matter what you say Raise your cup to another day In this big old life Door wide open, door closed down Depends on the moon Depends on the clown in your head Waving all those signs To skip the air force and shoot in the weeds Head straight for the exit place Step onto the path you made In this big old life Sun comes up, sun goes down On every small forgotten town Shining on every soul Spilling light in every dark hole There ain't a thing you gotta do To let that sun shine down on you Step right into this big old life Love me tender, love me not Depends on the flower Depends on the heart blossoming petals And the mirror inside Are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride In this big old life Yeah, are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride In this big old life If you are, then let's take a ride In this big old life
The rich folk wonder where the money went And section eight'll help ya make your rent And the soup kitchen is heaven sent When you're hungry and the dough's all spent This end of town looks so pretty at sundown There're lovely women like Tikiya all around Mr. Yambos rice and beans are golden brown You're in the heart of Middle Town Where the river runs to the sound You're in the heart of Middle Town Now up the soccer fields they have a ball All shapes and sizes as I recall Parents are screaming and they have their drawl 'Cause the coaches don't get nothing at all The carnival always brings bad weather Part of this to gets the kids together From Indian Hill I am looking down Down on the carnival in Middle Town A mighty river takes you to the sound You're in the heart of Middle Town La da da, la da 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 La da da, la da 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 The dairy queen, the wooer stone Ain't there no more Everything is shiny
Shiny, shiny, shiny
At Fruit Bakers we do the Jabba Jab Chelsea and Crystal keep your hopes alive Joseph and Eloise work hard to thrive The Wiener Schnitzel makes it worth your drive We ain't too up, we ain't too down I guess we're looking for that middle ground Sometimes I wonder if it can be found Here in the heart of Middle Town The mighty river she is ocean bound You're in the heart of Middle Town Ba 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 La da da, la da 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 The carnival always brings bad weather Part of this to gets the kids together From Indian Hill I am looking down Into the heart of Middle Town Where the river runs to the sound You're in the heart of Middle Town La da da, la da 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 La da da, la da 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 La da da, la da 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 La da da da
This place will never be forgotten. A lovely place called Middletown. I know I'll always remember. The warmth of its sound lingers so long, no other can be found. If you've been there, I will make a bet. The lovely times you won't forget. The chimes that are played echo through time, uncountable by days. The city park you'll have to see and Harbor Park's a place to be. Oh yes, Middletown's remembered. I seem to often feel it near somehow. Often I can hear its lovely tone. And City Hall has a beauty such a beauty on its own. So no, no one can say a town so dear will ever go away. I love it now and always will. Believe me, Middletown will leave you so fulfilled. Connecticut, that is. Middletown. Middletown. Middletown, Connecticut.
This place will never be forgotten. A lovely place called Middletown. I know I'll always remember. The warmth of its sound lingers so long, no other can be found. If you've been there, I will make a bet. The lovely times you won't forget. The chimes that are played echo through time, uncountable by days. The city park you'll have to see and Harbor Park's a place to be. Oh yes, Middletown's remembered. I seem to often feel it near somehow. Often I can hear its lovely tone. And City Hall has a beauty such a beauty on its own. So no, no one can say a town so dear will ever go away. I love it now and always will. Believe me, Middletown will leave you so fulfilled. Connecticut, that is. Middletown. Middletown. Middletown, Connecticut.
This place will never be forgotten. A lovely place called Middletown. I know I'll always remember. The warmth of its sound lingers so long, no other can be found. If you've been there, I will make a bet. The lovely times you won't forget. The chimes that are played echo through time, uncountable by days. The city park you'll have to see and Harbor Park's a place to be. Oh yes, Middletown's remembered. I seem to often feel it near somehow. Often I can hear its lovely tone. And City Hall has a beauty such a beauty on its own. So no, no one can say a town so dear will ever go away. I love it now and always will. Believe me, Middletown will leave you so fulfilled. Connecticut, that is. Middletown. Middletown. Middletown, Connecticut.
Ladder, ladder I descend Down where cocktail parties and Landscape vistas or rarefied air It's too freezing cold up there. Corriban hostesses make me shiver I'm climbing a ladder down to the river. Red current ocean bound Only here do I bow down. Sink my toes in fish rank muck Soft and warm and full of salt. My heart sings to the blessing giver I'm climbing a ladder down by the river. Climbing a ladder down to the river. Ladder, ladder I descend Down where cocktail parties and Sink my toes in fish rank muck Soft and warm and full of salt. My heart sings to the blessing giver I'm climbing a ladder down by the river.
Feel your wheels on the road And your hands on the wheel. Watch the way that the world makes you feel. Is it a heavy load Or is it lighter than air? Feel your wheels on the road It'll take you somewhere. It'll take you somewhere It'll bring you right there. Into the middle And a still small voice says I am what I am. I am right here and I am with you. In starlight, honey, I'm gonna shine Keep it in mind. Feel your feet on the ground In the crunch of the snow. You know your boots make a sound Wherever you go. Is as sweet as a whistle Or sad like a song Feel your boots on the ground And you won't step wrong And you won't step wrong And it won't take long Get into the middle And a still small voice says I am what I am And I'm gonna be strong And I am with you In the starlight honey and I'm gonna shine Keep it in mind Keep you here on the river On the whippoorwill call On the quiet of an evening On the rise and fall Is it crying out to you? Is it whispering? You gotta lean in Keep listening It's getting busy in my world It's getting busy in my head I get dizzy when I try to find A place to be instead Feel your wheels on the road And your boots on the ground Now listen to the rise and fall Try to put it down Go on and put it down Go on and let it rain Get back to the middle And a still small voice says I am what I am And this is the thing I am with you In the starlight honey and I'm gonna shine Keep it in mind Yeah, I am with you In the starlight honey and I'm gonna shine No matter what we do Keep it in mind
Just because of you I'm splitting With the pants I'm trying to get my thing together Just because of you Baby, please try to understand My turn at love, you gave it back again And I believe it's all that I can do To give you the best of me At first you came and cast my way I took a bite Now I don't know if what I'm doing's right So please come back And let's start over again, baby Out of the showers Out of the rain Out of the showers Ain't never gonna be the same Out of the showers Out of the rain With the fine hours In this house of love Cause when there's some love You'll find protection Never in a day will you be neglected Baby, come on in Hey girl, come out of the rain Love again You ain't never gonna be the same Baby, come on in Oh yeah, come out of the rain With the fine hours In this house of love Now ever since the first day We were talking Everything that came up clear So involving And baby, every day we seen Love was chances Take me on and come to me I can manage Cause everybody knows True love is power And everybody sang Come out of the showers Wanna tell you one thing that she want loving I tell you that she want me I'm giving her loving She giving it back to me She got everything Thing that I need I'm giving her loving Tell you she's giving it back Out of the showers Hey girl, come out of the rain Out of the showers Ain't never gonna be the same Out of the showers Hey girl, come out of the rain With the fine hours In this house of love Showers, hey girl Come out of the rain Out of the showers Ain't never gonna be the same Out of the showers, baby Hey girl, come out of the rain Live forever in this house of love Now ever since the first day We were talking Everything that came up clear So involving And baby, every day we seen Love was chances Take me on and come to me I can manage Cause everybody knows True love is power Everybody sang Come out of the showers I wanna tell you one thing that she want the loving I tell you that she want me Give her everything I've got She giving it back to me She's got everything Everything I need I'm giving her good love Tell you she's giving it back to me Out of the showers Hey girl, come out of the rain You ain't never gonna be the same Out of the showers Hey girl, come out of the rain With the fine hours In this house of love You and me, baby
When was the last time You wrote in my letter? You said, "My brother, how are you?" When was the last time You said, "I love you"? And I'm just calling To say that I do When was the last time You paid him a visit? You said, "What is it That seems to trouble your mind"? And when was the last time You had no reason? No special season? You would just be kind? Today you may be with us Tomorrow might not be yours The future is promised to none of us No matter how young or old Always remember Here there's no forever And to love each other Is the best gift to mankind When was the last time You said, "Brother, don't worry" "I'll come in a hurry" "Call me anytime" And when was the last time You said, "Sister, I'm sorry" "Brother, I'm sorry" "It will be alright" Do you honor your father and mother? Love thy neighbor as you love thyself? Are you ready to face your creator? To answer for yourself? Always remember Here there's no forever And to love each other Is the best gift to mankind Even a flower She's to be nurtured If you give it no water It will wither away and die Have you considered Here there's no forever? Be sure to love each other Before time pass you by Show love to everyone Before time pass you by Be kind to everyone Before time pass you by
Why did you leave me? Why did you have to go? Oh yes, you knew Oh yes, you knew that it would hurt me So I'm all alone I have nobody to call my own That's why I need somebody Rock me all night long Cause train number one's gone Train number two's gone Train number three's been gone Train number four's gone Train number five's been gone How long must I wait for you? Got my ticket for my reservation I'm getting through Trains are waiting on the track But I got no reservation for a ticket too So I'm gonna give my ticket back Come on! Train number one's back Train number two's back Train number three's been back How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
How long must I wait for you? Got my ticket for my reservation I'm getting through Trains are waiting on the track But I got no reservation for a ticket too So I'm gonna give my ticket back Cause train number one's back Train number two's back Train number three's been back Train number four's back Train number five's been back How long must I wait for you? Oh, the train kept rolling
All night long
Yeah, the train kept rolling
All night long
Yeah, the train kept rolling
All night long
Yeah, the train kept rolling
All night long
Oh, the train kept rolling
All night long
How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
Let her roll, let her roll
All night long
How long must I wait for you? Yeah, the train kept rolling
All night long
Oh, the train kept rolling
All night long
Oh, the train kept rolling
All night long
Yeah, the train kept rolling
All night long
Oh, the train kept rolling
All night long
How long must I wait for you?
There's a lady in town Who saved my life at least a thousand times I don't even know her name But that just goes to show you The way that I am She's not a doctor or a lawyer A priest or a nun But to me, she's divine She steps out into the road And they can't stop me from here The way she lights me glow The way she stops those wheels She's the main street, middle town, crossing guard She's the main street, middle town, crossing guard She's a hero of mine I thank her every time But she ever left this town Then cause she cut us down Then cause she cut us down. She's the Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. Makes me proud to call Middle Town my own backyard. The Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. From the air at Conny Bridge or our fruit line they come a bailing by. They don't wanna stop for nothing. They're all caught up in their own little world. I butt my pretty brunette. She shuts them down and does it all with a smile. She's just a local girl. She loves her own hometown. She lets her flag unfold. She spans the world around. She's the Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. She's the Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. She's a hero of mine. I thank her every time. But she ever left this town. Then cause she cut us down. She's the Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. Makes me proud to call Middle Town my own backyard. The Main Street, Middle Town, Crossing Guard. Well, there's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market. There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market.
Glass half-empty, glass half-full. Depends on the day, depends on the fool who is asking. And the fool who replies. You're gonna drink it up anyway. Does it really matter what you say? Raise your cup to another day in this big old life. Door wide open, door closed down. Depends on the moon, depends on a clown in your head. Waving all those signs to skip the warehouses and shouldn't squeeze. Head straight for the exit lane. Step over the path you made in this big old life. Sun comes up, sun goes down on every small forgotten town. Shining on every soul, spilling light in every dark hole. There ain't a thing you gotta do to let that sun shine down on you. Step right into this big old life. Love me tender, love me not. Depends on the flower, depends on the heart plus the petals and the mirror inside. Are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life. Yeah, are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life. If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life.
The rich folk wonder where the money went. And Section Eight'll help you make your rent. And the soup kitchen is heaven sent. Oh, and you're hungry and the dough's all spent. They send you down looks so pretty at sundown. Lovely women like Tekeisha all around. Mr. Yambos rice and beans are golden brown. You're in the heart of Middle Town. Where the river runs to the sound. You're in the heart of Middle Town. Now up the soccer fields they have a bar. All shapes and sizes, as I recall. Parents are screaming and they have their call. Cause the coaches don't get nothing at all. The carnival always brings bad weather. But at least it gets the kids together. From Indian Hill I am looking down. Down on the carnival in Middle Town. A mighty river takes you to the sound. You're in the heart of Middle Town. The Dairy Queen, the Whore's Stone ain't there no more. Everything is shiny. At Brew Bakers we do the Jabba Jab. Chelsea and Crystal keep your hopes alive. Joseph and Eloise work hard to thrive. The Wiener Schnitzel makes it worth your drive. We ain't too up, we ain't too down. I guess we're looking for that middle ground. Sometimes I wonder if it can be found here in the heart of Middle Town. The mighty river, she is ocean blue. You're in the heart of Middle Town. The carnival always brings bad weather. But at least it gets the kids together. From Indian Hill I am looking down into the heart of Middle Town. Where the river runs just to the sound. You're in the heart of Middle Town.
Just because of you, I'm splitting with the pants. I'm trying to get my thing together. Just because of you, baby, please try to understand. My turn at love, you gave it back again. And I believe it's all that I can do to give you the best of me. At first you came and cast my way. I took a bite. Now I don't know if what I'm doing's right. So please come back and let's start over again, baby. Out of the showers, out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. Cause in this house of love you find protection. Never in a day will you be neglected. Baby, come on in. Hey, girl, come out of the rain. Love again. You ain't never gonna be the same. Baby, come on in. Oh, yeah. Come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking, everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seeing lover chances. Take me on and come to me. I can manage. Cause everybody knows true love is power. And everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." Wanna tell you one thing that she want loving? I tell you that she want me.
Shoo-bee, shoo-bee, shoo-bee.
I'm giving her loving, she giving it back to me.
Shoo-bee, shoo-bee, shoo-bee.
She got everything, thing that I need.
Shoo-bee, shoo-bee, shoo-bee.
I'm giving her loving, tell you she's giving it back. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain. Come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of the showers. Showers, hey, girl. Come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, baby. Hey, girl, come out of the rain. Live forever in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seeing lover chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. 'Cause everybody knows true love is power. Everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." I wanna tell you one thing that she want loving. I tell you that she want me. Shoo-bee, shoo-bee, shoo-bee. Yeah, boy, everything I've got, she giving back to me. Shoo-bee, shoo-bee, shoo-bee. She's got everything, everything I need. Good love. I'm giving her good love, tell you she's giving it back to me. Out of the showers, hey, girl. Come out of the rain. You ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey, girl. Come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of love.
This place will never be forgotten. A lovely place called Middletown. I know I'll always remember. The warmth of its sound. Linger so long, no other can be found. If you've been there, I will make a bet. The lovely times you won't forget. The chimes that are played. Echo through time, uncountable by days. The city parks you'll have to see. And harbor parks, a place to be. Oh yes, Middletown's remembered. I seem to often feel it near somehow. Often I can hear its lovely tone. And City Hall has a beauty, such a beauty on its own. So no, no one can say. A town so dear will ever go away. I love it now and always will. Believe me, Middletown will leave you so fulfilled. Connecticut, that is. Middletown. Middletown. Middletown, Connecticut.
Ladder, ladder I descend. Down where cocktail parties and. Landscape vistas or rarefied air. It's too freezing cold up there. Corribant hostesses make me shiver. I'm climbing a ladder down to the river. Red river current ocean bound. Only here do I bow down. Sink my toes in fish ray muck. Soft and warm and full of suck. My heart sinks to the blessing giver. I'm climbing a ladder down by the river. Climbing a ladder down to the river. Ladder, ladder I descend. Down where cocktail parties and. Sink my toes in fish ray muck. Soft and warm and full of suck. My heart sinks to the blessing giver. I'm climbing a ladder down by the river.
Feel your wheels on the road. And your hands on the wheel. Watch the way that the world makes you feel. Is it a heavy load? Or is it lighter than air? Feel your wheels on the road. It'll take you somewhere. It'll take you somewhere. It'll bring you right there. Into the middle. And a still small voice says, "I am what I am." "I am right here and I am with you." "In starlight, honey, and we're gonna shine." "Keep it in mind." Feel your feet on the ground. In the crunch of the snow. You know your boots make a sound. Wherever you go. Is it sweet as a whistle? Or sad like a song? Feel your boots on the ground. And you won't step wrong. And you won't step wrong. And it won't take long. Getting to the middle. And a still small voice says, "I am what I am." "And I'm gonna be strong and I am with you." "In starlight, honey, and we're gonna shine." "Keep it in mind." Keep you here on the river. On the whipple well call. On the quiet of an evening. On the rise and fall. Is it crying out to ya? Is it whispering? You gotta lean in, keep listening. It's getting busy in my world. It's getting busy in my head. I get dizzy when I try to find a place to be instead. Feel your wheels on the road. And your boots on the ground. Now listen to the rise and fall. Try to put it down. Go on and put it down. Go on and let it rain. Get back to the middle. And a still small voice says, "I am what I am." "And this is the thing, I am with you." "In the starlight, honey, and we're gonna shine." "Keep it in mind." Yeah, I am with you in the starlight, honey. "And we're gonna shine." No matter what we do. Keep it in mind.
Just because of you, I'm splitting with the pants. I'm trying to get my thing together. Just because of you, baby, please try to understand. My turn at love, you gave it back again. And I believe it's all that I can do. To give you the best of me. At first you came and cast my way. I took a bite. Now I don't know if what I'm doing's right. So please come back and let's start over again, baby. Out of the showers, out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, out of the rain. With the fine hours. I was in this house of love. You and me, baby. 'Cause in this house of love, you find protection. Never in a day will you be neglected. Baby, come on in. Hey girl, come out of the rain. Love again. You ain't never gonna be the same. Baby, come on in. Oh yeah, come out of the rain. With the fine hours. I was in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seen. Love was chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. 'Cause everybody knows, true love is power. And everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." Wanna tell you one thing that she want loving. I tell you that she want me. She be do be do. I'm giving her loving, she giving it back to me. She be do be do. She got everything, thing that I need. She be do be do. I'm giving her loving, tell you she's giving it back. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours. I was in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of the showers. Showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, baby. Hey girl, come out of the rain. Live forever in this house of love. You and me, baby. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we seen. Love was chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. 'Cause everybody knows, true love is power. Everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." I wanna tell you one thing that she want the loving. I tell you that she want me. She be do be do. Give her everything I've got, she giving it back to me. She be do be do. She's got everything, everything I need. She be do be do. I'm giving her good love, tell you she's giving it back to me. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers. You ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours. I was in this house of love. You and me, baby. In this house of love.
When was the last time? You wrote him a letter? You said, "My brother, how are you?" When was the last time? You said, "I love you." And I'm just calling to say that I do. When was the last time? You paid him a visit? You said, "What is it that seems to trouble your mind?" And when was the last time? You had no reason? No special season? You would just be kind? Today you may be with us. Tomorrow might not be yours. The future is promised to none of us. No matter how young or old. Always remember. Here there's no forever. And to love each other is the best gift to mankind. When was the last time? You said, "Brother, don't worry." "I'll come in a hurry, call me anytime." And when was the last time? You said, "Sister, I'm sorry." "Brother, I'm sorry, it will be alright." Do you honor your father and mother? Love thy neighbor as you love thyself? Are you ready to face your creator? To answer for yourself? Always remember. Here there's no forever. And to love each other is the best gift to mankind. Even a flower, even root, needs to be nurtured. If you give it no water, it will wither away and die. Have you considered? Here there's no forever. Be sure to love each other before time pass you by. Show love to everyone before time pass you by. Show love to everyone before time pass you by. Be kind to everyone before time pass you by. Be sure you love each other before time pass you by.
Why did you leave me? Why did you have to go? Oh yes, you knew, oh yes, you knew that it would hurt me. So I'm all alone, I have nobody to call my own. That's why I need somebody to rock me all night long. Cause train number one's gone. Train number two's gone. Train number three's been gone. Train number four's gone. Train number five's been gone. How long must I wait for you? Got my ticket for my reservation, I'm in groove. Trains are waiting on the track. But I got no reservation for a ticket too. So I'm gonna give my ticket back, huh. Train number one's back. Train number two's back. Train number three's been back. How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you? Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
Let her roll, let her roll.
All night long.
How long must I wait for you?
There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. I don't even know her name, but that just goes to show you the way that I am. She's not a doctor or a lawyer, a priest or a nun, but to me she's divine. She steps out into the road, make it snow in the field. The way she lights the glow, the way she stops those wheels. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's a hero of mine. I thank her every time. I hope she ever left this town. I hope the cars will cut us down. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. Makes me proud to call middle town my own backyard. The main street, middle town crossing guard. From the Aragonia Bridge or off Fruit Night, they come a bale and bribe. They don't wanna stop for nothing, all caught up in their own little world. I butt my brave broom net, she shuts them down and does it all with a smile. She's just a local girl, she loves her old hometown. She lets her flag unfold, she spans the love around. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. She's a hero of mine. I thank her every time. I hope she ever left this town. I hope the cars will cut us down. She's the main street, middle town crossing guard. Makes me proud to call middle town my own backyard. The main street, middle town crossing guard. There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market. There's a lady in town who saved my life at least a thousand times. At the Salvation Army, crossing the street to the public market.
Glass half empty, glass half full. Depends on the day, depends on the fool who is asking. And the fool who replies. You're gonna drink it up anyway. Does it really matter what you say? Raise your cup to another day in this big old life. Door wide open, door closed down. Depends on the moon, depends on the clown in your head. Waving all those signs to skip the air force and shouldn't we? Head straight for the exit please. Step onto the path you made in this big old life. Sun comes up, sun goes down. Every small forgotten town shining on every soul. Spilling light in every dark hole. There ain't a thing you gotta do to let that sun shine down on you. Step right into this big old life. Love me tender, love me not. Depends on the flower, depends on the heart plus the petals. And the mirror inside. Are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life. Yeah, are you ready to rise and shine? Are you ready to say be mine? If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life. If you are, then let's take a ride in this big old life.
The rich folk wonder where the money went. And section eight'll help you make your rent. And the soup kitchen is heaven sent. Oh, and you're hungry and the dough's all spent. This end of town looks so pretty at sundown. A lovely women like Tekeisha all around. Mr. Yambos rice and beans are golden brown. You're in the heart of middle town. Where the river runs to the south. You're in the heart of middle town. Now up the soccer fields they have a ball. All shapes and sizes, as I recall. Parents are screaming and they have their drawl. Cause the coaches don't get nothing at all. The carnival always brings bad weather. But it pleased to get the kids together. From Indian Hill I am looking down. Down on the carnival in middle town. A mighty river takes you to the south. You're in the heart of middle town. La da da, la da 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 da. La da da, la da 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 da. The dairy queen, the worwer's stone, ain't there no more? Everything is shiny.
Shiny, 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 shiny.
At Fruit Bakers we do the jabba jab. Chelsea and Crystal keep your hopes alive. Joseph and Eloise work hard to thrive. The wiener Schnitzel makes it worth your drive. We ain't too up, we ain't too down. I guess we're looking for that middle ground. Sometimes I wonder if it can be found. Here in the heart of middle town. The mighty river, she is ocean bound. You're in the heart of middle town. Ba 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 ba. Ba 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 ba. La da da, la da 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 da. The carnival always brings bad weather. But it pleased to get the kids together. But it pleased to get the kids together. From Indian Hill I am looking down. Into the heart of middle town. Where the river runs to the south. You're in the heart of middle town.
Just because of you, I'm splitting with the pants. I'm trying to get my thing together. Just because of you, baby, please try to understand. My turn at love, you gave it back again. And I believe it's all that I can do to give you the best of me. At first you came and cast my way, I took a bite. Now I don't know if what I'm doing's right. So please come back and let's start over again, baby. Out of the showers, out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. 'Cause in this house of love you find protection. Never in a day will you be neglected. Baby, come on in. Hey, girl, come out of the rain. Love again.
You ain't never gonna be the same.
Baby, come on in. Oh, yeah. Come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we see love was chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. 'Cause everybody knows true love is power. And everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." Wanna tell you one thing that she want loving? I tell you that she want me.
Shoo-bee-doo-bee-doo-bee.
I'm giving her loving, she giving it back to me.
Shoo-bee-doo-bee-doo-bee.
She got everything, thing that I need.
Shoo-bee-doo-bee-doo-bee.
I'm giving her loving, tell you she's giving it back. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love.
You and me, baby, in this house of love.
Shower, hey, girl, come out of the rain. Out of the showers ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the shower, baby. Hey, girl, come out of the rain. Live forever in this house of love. Now ever since the first day we were talking. Everything that came up clear was so involving. And baby, every day we see love was chances. Take me on and come to me, I can manage. 'Cause everybody knows true love is power. Everybody sang, "Come out of the showers." I wanna tell you one thing that she want the loving? I tell you that she want me.
Shoo-bee-doo-bee-doo-bee.
Give her everything I've got, she giving it back to me.
Shoo-bee-doo-bee-doo-bee.
She's got everything, everything I need. I'm giving her good love, tell you she's giving it back to me. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain.
Out of the showers.
You ain't never gonna be the same. Out of the showers, hey, girl, come out of the rain. With the fine hours in this house of love. You and me, baby, in this house of love.